Welcome everyone to tonight's school board meeting. And to begin, if you would like to join us, please do for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the public for which it stands.
We will now adopt our agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the agenda has been adopted. And now it's time for some special recognition. And this is a very special week. This is the week to recognize our education support professionals. And for that, I'd like to call forward Janee Gomes as well as the association presidents. And we have a proclamation to read, and this will be read by Director Gronwald.
So whereas education support professionals are involved in nearly every aspect of education, maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classrooms, providing over 60% of all instructional hours to special education, English language learner, and opportunity gap students, performing and conducting research activities, providing information technology and media services, administrative support functions, safe transportation, and a secure and healthy environment, and many other specialized services. And whereas these dedicated individuals deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they do for this state, their communities, and the students enrolled in Washington's public schools and universities. And whereas there are over 62,000 education support professionals working with and helping children in Washington's universities and public schools. And whereas education support professionals are instrumental in fulfilling the state's responsibility to educate all students. And whereas by supporting the learning environment, education support professionals are crucial partners with teachers, parents, administrators, and school boards. Now therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 12th through the 16th, 2018, as Education Support Professionals Week.
Would you, did you want us to comment? I guess, do we have comments?
Well, I would just like to say thank you for everything that you all do. I mean, schools wouldn't run if we didn't have the support that you bring to us. And our kids look forward to seeing you every day when you're in the schools. And it's just an important function. And they're very valued employees in our district.
For all that you do.
In my mind, it's just amazing that you touch every part of our school district and make the whole district run well. And by listening to that proclamation, all of those varied functions that personnel in your associations are involved with is just amazing. And sometimes you're unsung, but here, we definitely want to recognize all the great work that you do. So thank you very much.
I think I just wanted to say a few words. If you go to the dictionary and you look up the word classified, and I sent this out to all staff on Sunday night, it has two main definitions. And one is to put things into a category. And often when we think of our classified employees or our support employees, you think of IT, you think of secretarial, paraeducators, bus drivers, food service. I could go on and on, more than I could list. But when I start to think of these individuals and how we really should classify them, they are educators, they are caregivers, they are mentors and role models for the students in our system on a daily basis. They're the first person that our kids see in the morning, and they're the last people that our kids see before they leave at the end of the day. The other definition of classified is like a government secret. And as you mentioned, all too often, these employees aren't recognized. They're in the background. And some of these, some of the roles that they fill, the only time you notice them is when something goes wrong. And then it's that, oh my goodness, how long until we can get this fixed? And then they come to the rescue and actually get the building plumbing fixed, the electrical system, the ventilation systems, those types of things. So what I would encourage us to do is not keep them classified in the way of secret, but make sure everybody in the community knows the huge contribution that they make to our students on a daily basis. And with that, I have a small token from myself that I wanted to give you. We had these candy bars made that I distributed to most of the class, or a lot of the classified employees that actually have the Evergreen logo actually pressed into the chocolate as well. So I have these for you.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now it's my turn. So it was an honor in order to be able to ask Stephen Bill to speak to the classified. I have the utmost respect for all of you. Those that are classified or that are in the audience, can you raise your hand? Could we give them a round of applause as well? Thank you for joining us this evening. So I get the opportunity to work with both Sandy and Sue quite often in order to problem solve and work together in order to help keep things running smoothly. And so I thought I would just do something kind of fun because we don't typically get that type of relationship when we're working together. And so this is in representative for all of classified, but I put together M&amp;Ms for the many, many thanks for all of the work that you all do for us. Three Musketeers because it takes a team in order to serve the students and keep Evergreen going, and you're a super important part of that team. The energy drink Rockstar because all classified are rock stars. The last one is the peppermint, the York peppermint patties. And it's because everyone deserves a pat on the back as well as a commitment to education. So thank you to all of you for everything that you do.
Wow, there's a candy theme tonight. I like that.
A puns, too.
Next on our agenda, we want to discuss a resolution 6022 on safety. And for this, I'd like to hand it over to Director Bradford to read the resolution.
And it's the longest resolution we've ever had, I believe. So bear with me, my friends. Okay. Resolution number 6022, Safety. A resolution of the Board of Directors of Evergreen School District, Number 114, Clark County, Vancouver, Washington, to declare support for approved school safety measures, declare support for students appropriately advocating for change, and declare support of the March for Our Lives on March 24th, 2018. Whereas providing a safe school environment that ensures both physical and emotional safety of students and staff creates the conditions necessary to foster academic achievement. And whereas safe schools provide an environment where teaching and learning are not distracted, disruptions are minimized, drugs, violence, bullying, and fear are not present, students are not discriminated against, expectations for behavior are clearly communicated, and standards of behavior are maintained, and students are taught to take ownerships of their actions, including the reparation of any harm done. And whereas school violence presents a clear and present danger to the students, parents, educators, paraeducators, administrators, and support staff of the Evergreen School District. And whereas since 2013, there have been 291 shootings on elementary, middle, and high school and college campuses in the United States, which averages to about one per week. And 168 of those shootings were at K-12 schools. And whereas in the past five years, eight school shootings have occurred in Washington State, four of which resulted in injury or death. And facilities in the Evergreen School District and districts around Washington State have far too often been the scenes of gun violence and threats of gun violence. And whereas gun violence and threats of gun violence in schools undermine the sense of security that all students should have in their learning environments. And whereas the most effective approach to creating safe school environment requires a comprehensive coordinated effort, including school-wide, district-wide, and community-wide strategies, where all institutions, organizations, and individuals must accept responsibility for their critical roles and collaborate to establish a positive environment for teaching and learning. And whereas Evergreen School Board Results Policies state an outcome where students understand, model, and advance the interconnectedness of individuals' cultures, communities, and their environment, and specifically that students will understand how to appropriately advocate for change. And whereas students have seized the conscience of the nation with their demand for strong action to reduce preventable gun violence, and on March 24th, 2018, a national march for our lives will be held by student leaders seeking to deliver an unmistakable message that now is the time to pass common sense gun safety laws. And whereas it is the belief of the Board of Directors that Evergreen and Washington State must be national leaders in innovative and meaningful policy to confront school violence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Evergreen School Board supports prevention, intervention, and community reentry programs that reduce community and gun violence, and encourages the state to consider increased funding for programs and school staffing to include counselors, nurses, and psychologists that support student mental health, social and emotional learning, and anti-bullying. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of the Evergreen School District will continue to work with a broad spectrum of local community stakeholders, local law enforcement, mental health professionals, parents, students, teachers, and staff to develop, implement, and monitor policies and programs that foster and support a positive school climate, free from harassment and violence. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of the Evergreen School District encourages Evergreen School District students to seek out appropriate ways to communicate, lobby, and make their feelings on school safety known to those elected officials with the power to implement change. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of the Evergreen School District wholly endorses the student-led March for Our Lives on March 24th, 2018. And it'll be adopted and signed this date with the entire Board signature and Dr. John Stich as superintendent.
Thank you, Victoria. Any comments?
I was just going to say that really strikes me is the numbers, the 291 shootings since 2013, and how many of those have happened on K-12 campuses. And it's so many, but it's one too many. And being aware and putting the things in place to focus on student safety and staff safety is the utmost concern. And I think that's something that we should all always have top of mind.
And I think it's also, you know, I've been reading a lot in the letters to the editor and of course on the national news, lots of commentary about it. And it's not a simple answer. There's not a silver, excuse the expression, but silver bullet to, you know, one thing that's going to help us here. This is a very, it's going to take all these comprehensive measures to stop this and to create the relationships and have the, our students, because it's often it's a student at the school that's coming in. And so how do we give the services and have our students feel like they can come to us when they need us to have the support that they need? And not simple. That's the sad part is it's complicated.
I can only echo that, the complicated nature of both providing a safe environment and the perception of a safe environment for a child that intersects with every part of that child's life, that student's life as they age, including factors we have absolutely no control over as teachers, administrators, board members. One of these clauses expresses feelings that I had as a student aspiring to feel safe, whether or not that was actually the case. Anxieties can get in your way and build that perception. And as many interventions as we can, positive interventions that we can think of and implement, which calm all of the students to a point where they can see one another and get along, I think that's the outcome we're looking for, right? There are all these enormously popular things that lawmakers could be doing. I would like to see them do some of those while recognizing that that's not a complete answer, as Vic pointed out. I'm really pleased to be supplying support by resolution for students who want to advocate for this kind of change because that's something I'm really interested in fostering, sense through my own kids, that a lot of times they perceive the adults in the school as forces of nature to kind of navigate through. They can be brought to see us as people with identical feelings and aspirations. And in that dialogue, communication, then that will also contribute to it. I've been arguing about gun laws online for the last couple of weeks, whether that's to my benefit or detriment, I can't tell yet. But the most poignant thing I can think of is that if somebody proposes part of a solution, I'll take it. I'll take it for our kids, even if it's not the full solution. And then we'll keep thinking about it and keep considering risks. We have excellent risk managers here. I appreciate their work, and I'm glad to ratify that and support the students with this resolution.
I would just reiterate what all of my fellow directors have stated, as well as add that as community leaders, it is our responsibility to, and to give the students our support. We actually have adopted OE about giving our students the power and the knowledge and the right way of using their voice. And with this resolution, it is stating that we are supporting them and will stand behind them for the March 24th walk.
And I'd like to add that school safety has always been a top priority of ours as a board. You know, we want our schools to be safe, we want our students and staff to feel safe in the buildings. And I like this resolution because it reiterates our values, it reiterates what we've put in policy to talk about how important safety is for us. And so I like that as a summary. And then as we've all discussed too, there's no one simple answer. It takes a comprehensive approach to continually get better and better at safety. And so this resolution, in my mind, talks about our vigilance, our continued vigilance on making sure that we're constantly looking for ways to keep getting better and better at having safe, safe schools. Yeah, thank you. Comments? Okay, thanks. And as Victoria said, we'll be all signing that resolution after the meeting.
Take a vote on it?
Oh, is that something we vote on?
Yeah, probably should.
Okay, I'll take them.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 6022 for student safety.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution is adopted. Thank you, John.
Welcome.
Next, we have our focus on student results. And we have a second reading for one of our results policies, which is Results Policy Three, which is on social and emotional development. And at this point, the Board has received the reasonable interpretation and indicators for this policy. We passed the first reading, and as I mentioned, tonight, we're discussing the second reading. And so for this, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Stich for any updates. John?
I went through this policy and our expected indicators at the last meeting in detail. I haven't heard any comments from the public staff or the Board since then. It is kind of ironic that right after you pass this resolution, you're about to pass for second reading the indicators that we're going to use to measure our social impact on social emotional learning with our students. And this goes right alongside the academics from a priority standpoint, that it really becomes foundational for what our kids need, not only for academic success, but for their just future success in lives. And I see this as one of those key measures that you talk about, the multifaceted issue of school safety. This is a cornerstone of providing school safety, is proper social emotional growth and having, developing those relationships, teaching students how to develop those relationships. And so with that, at this time, I recommend that the Board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators of the Board's results policies are three, social emotional development, as presented for second reading and approval.
Okay, thanks, John. At this point, are there any comments or questions from the audience? Being none, that closes the portion for audience comments or questions. I'll now entertain a motion from the Board.
I recommend the Board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for the Board's result policy are three, social and emotional development, as presented for second reading and approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll now throw it open to the Board for comments and questions.
Good discussion about it at the last Board meeting, and I'm glad to see this moving.
Yeah, and as we've talked about before, I mean, this is a huge policy for us. It's a results policy. It's talking about social emotional learning, which I know we all feel very strongly about. It's also breaking new ground because I'm not aware of such a policy that exists elsewhere. And not only exists, but also trying to come up with real concrete indicators. So I'm very excited about this policy. Any other comments or questions?
I've been thinking about this. Most of the evidences of compliance that we're starting with are the Panorama Survey Questions, and actually in connection with the idea of ratifying student communication with respect to something that's kind of critical and urgent for their feelings right now, is that just that reflection gave me more confidence that the Panorama surveys are going to give us what we need to know as a baseline. So like Vic, I'm really happy to ratify this just as it stands right now.
Anything else? Okay, now we'll take a vote. So all in favor to accept our E, our Results Policy Three as presented, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so our three has passed the second reading and has been adopted. Thank you. So next on our agenda is the monitoring of district operations. And we want to have a first reading for OE Three, which is on community relationships. And I know we talked about community stakeholder relationships. We talked about this at a workshop a couple of weeks ago, but now we want to talk about it for the first reading. And so the Board has received the reasonable interpretation and indicators for OE Three. And I'd like to turn it over to you, John, for an explanation.
Okay, and I'm going to go through this in detail for the people in the audience and also for video so that the public has an opportunity to see this. It's also in our Board docs and available on the website for people to view. But OE Three, or Operations Expectations Three, is, as you said, based on community stakeholder relationships. The overall expectation is that the superintendent shall maintain an organizational culture that engages parents and citizens, treating them with respect, dignity, and courtesy. It's broken into several sections. The first section of 3.1 is the superintendent will protect confidential information. The indicators of compliance that we will be bringing to the Board annually will be first, the applicable data sharing agreements relative to software programs that the school district utilizes from third-party providers, and the constraints that we put on those agreements to protect our data now and into the future with those organizations. Also provide to the Board a summary of cybersecurity resources and processes currently in place, and a list of any data breaches that have occurred over the past year. Additionally, a listing of all public record requests involving student information and the privileges asserted for each. That's the legal term for the exemptions or the things that we've redacted from those public information requests or public record requests. And then the final indicator would be the lack of instances where confidential student or family information was inappropriately shared by employees. So any examples brought forth by the Board or the community of information that they gathered from our staff inappropriately that should not have been shared per FERPA rules. Section 3.2, the superintendent will effectively handle complaints. Currently, we have identified that we do not have a district operations policy in place on complaints towards the school district. We have staff complaints, student complaints, but not one that generally covers this. We're working with WASD, and we will be coming up with a sample policy. And once this is passed, it would be my intent to finalize that and approve that policy and include that in the policy summary changes that I send out to staff and post to the community. And then with that policy in place, the evidence would either be the absence of any complaints provided in writing at the district level, or a summary of the total number of written parent-community complaints and the average time from submission to closure is what we will provide to the Board annually. Section 3.3, the superintendent will maintain an organizational culture that A, values individual differences of opinion, B, reasonably includes people in decisions that affect them, C, provides open and honest communication in all written and interpersonal interactions, D, focuses on common achievement of the Board's results policies, and E is open, responsive, and welcoming. With that, the Board will be provided with a listing of public input and the interactions that support future directions and decisions, or any decision-making occurring over the past year, which would include the key demographic groups that were identified and specific avenues established to ensure their input is collected, and how all perspectives were collected and recognized as part of the data analysis process. A good example of this moving forward will be with redrawing elementary boundaries to include a 22nd elementary school that we will be putting into place in the next, in a little, what is it, in a little over two years from now, we should be opening that school. So in about a year, we should be working with the Board on that public process. So I'll be bringing to you how we actually go out to the different, identify and reach out to the different demographic groups to ensure that all voices are heard within our community in making that decision. The additional evidence, we do have a Panorama Parent and Community Survey, a culture survey that we'll be sending out, and we've added two specific questions to that survey that aren't in the National Norm Standards Survey that they provide. The first is, how do you feel the district's decisions and direction are focused on improving student results, which gets at that, everything should be focused on our results policy? And how do you feel the district and its school are providing a welcoming environment? So how welcome do we make our parents? And we'll be tracking those two questions specifically under this Operations Expectation. And the last section and for, is 3.4, the superintendent will foster partnerships with community stakeholders and organizations that advance the district's mission and purpose. So I will be providing the Board with a summary of all organizational partnerships from the past year connecting local organizations to classroom experiences. So how well do we bring the community into the classroom? Then we'll also provide the Board with a summary of all job shadow, internship, apprenticeship, and learning experiences over the past year connected to local businesses and organizations. So how well are we pushing our students and programs out into the community as well? So you've got that two-way look on our interactions with the community. We'll also provide a summary of all leadership involvement by district leadership with local organizations from the past year. So I think you're going to be surprised how many Boards that our district staff sit on, and how many memberships we have. And then also how many events held in the district to initiate and develop relationships with community leaders. So if we bring people in as a focus group, we'll be sharing those as well and tracking those annually. So that's what we have that we've developed for reasonable indicators for OE Three. So at this time, I recommend the Board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators So at this time, I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for Operations Expectations OE three, community stakeholder relationships as presented for first reading and move it forward to second reading and final approval.
Thanks, John. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, that closes our portion of audience participation for this policy. I'll now entertain a motion from the board.
I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for Operational Expectation OE three, stakeholder relationships as presented for a first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll open it up to the board then to talk about your comments and questions about this policy.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think the timing is good, that we're having a discussion about this because as we look at what we want to do with our safety measures, it involves these partnerships. So it's very for us to have a really good handle on who our partners are and how we can, and then how we receive input from the community at their schools.
Well, and another example is just passing our bond. I think we went out and had a lot of that two-way dialogue with a lot of our community partners and people in the community to get feedback and find out what they wanted from our school district as far as, you know, what schools to invest, felt was most important. And I think it was really why we were so successful in the bonds because we had so much dialogue going back and forth with our community.
Any other comments or questions?
Please to see this as a reflection of our values and the way that you've laid out the interpretations for this policy.
Yeah, I think this is a really important policy, you know, because having a culture where, you know, we're engaging with parents, we're engaging with the community, you know, is so vital for us to succeed as a district on many levels, like you're talking about, you know, the bond and being able to know, you know, how we should proceed as a district. Also, you know, we place a high value on internships, right? And we can't do internships unless we have strong partnerships out there in the community. So there's just so many facets to this policy that I really glad, I'm really glad that we're being very, I don't know, I guess very detailed about it because there's just so many things that are so important for us. So yeah, thanks for, for putting this together. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. We'll now take a vote to accept OE three as presented as a first reading. All in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so OE three has been approved as a first reading, and we'll bring it forward for a second reading and approval at our next board meeting. So thank you. So what do we have next? Oh, yeah, consent agendas. So the first is the Board Consent Agenda, and that consists of a few things. Minutes from our special board or directors meeting on February 27th, we had a workshop on school improvement plan back on March 6th. We had a gathering to honor Julie Boeckenegger at the Iris Awards, which is really good. Congratulations, Julie, by the way, on March 8th. We also have some resolutions, Resolution 6020, which is Sifton Elementary School, new in Lew. We also have Resolution Number 6021, Image Elementary School, new in Lew. And we also have Resolution Number 6024, Underutilized School Facilities. Any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Okay, so I'll call for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda of the board has passed. Next, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Any comments or questions? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so the superintendent's consent agenda has passed. Next, we have superintendent's report. John?
As you mentioned in the board consent agenda, I attended the Iris Awards, and I'm very proud of Julie Boeckenegger and her well-deserved recognition. And you did a wonderful job with your speech. As I told you that night, you knocked it out of the park. It was great.
Thank you. It was a lot of fun.
Also, we just wanted to highlight Lauren Bradley from Endeavour Elementary School was named the Regional Principal of the Year. Sororously, Lauren chose not to do all the work it takes to compete at the state level to be State Principal of the Year because I'd be willing to bet if she didn't win, she would have given everybody in there a run for their money. She's a fabulous administrator and a great mentor and leader at that, at that facility. Also, the Evergreen School District Foundation recently announced their Teacher of the Year, Donald Rasmussen. Got to go out to Union High School and watch him get that award. He was shocked. Was nominated by five of his students, had no idea he'd even been nominated, and when we walked in the room, he was clueless why we were even there. So very nice.
It's the best part of that presentation.
The best ones are clueless.
Want to commend, yes.
That sounds funny.
It sounds funny. I'm sorry, I put it, I've done it again, haven't I, Rob? The best ones are clueless of the regard.
Surprise. You mean, you mean the surprise, right?
The surprise, yes.
I get it.
Okay, I'll take it.
Want to give some commendations?
Don't let me live that down for six months.
Trying to give some commendations to our HRT department, led by Janay, and we recently held a student-teacher recruiting information event, which was very nice, was not only attended by Evergreen student teachers, but by student teachers from some neighboring districts that are actually doing their teaching elsewhere and are interested in coming here. And got some very positive feedback from the buildings and from some of our mentor teachers who are working with them on how much it was appreciated and how valued they felt as possible future employees for our district. Have something to pass out to the board. The WSU Vancouver is putting on a conversation about the opioid crisis. There's an event in Vancouver on Tuesday, March 20th, one in Waschugle on the 22nd, Stevenson on the 22nd, and Longview on the 23rd. So they wanted to make sure that you were aware of those events. Also want to mention we're, although I'm sure you're well aware of this, less than two weeks away from the gala, from the Evergreen School District Foundation on the 24th. So is it sold out yet?
Yeah, we're getting close, actually. I'm pretty, pretty thrilled about the results this year so far.
And we've had, just jumping from one topic to another, in alignment with our School Support Staff Appreciation Week, it was nice to be part of a group serving breakfast at Transportation this morning. All of our transportation administrators and some of our central office administrators went down and made breakfast sandwiches, and we actually served, what, close to 300 people in 20 minutes? Took us about an hour and a half to prepare that much, but, but I think they appreciated, and I really appreciate the work that our bus drivers do and the impact that they make and the fact that they drive around on some of the busiest streets in our community and all kinds of weather with 50-plus kids behind them, trying to maintain discipline and order and get kids there safe. They do an amazing job. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is tomorrow, we are very likely are going to be dealing with some student walkouts. We've sent out communications, we have safety plans in place. The basic gist of this is that, as you mentioned in your resolution, while it's our job to teach students how to appropriately advocate, we've asked our staff to encourage students to advocate appropriately, and that this is not a district-endorsed event. In accordance with state and federal law, students do have First Amendment rights, but they cannot just create a disruption to the educational environment. So our stance has been that we aren't going to physically restrain students if they stand up and attempt to walk out. However, if they walk out, we'll have additional staff on site. Most of our central office administration is going to be out at our secondary schools to help support them. We have additional law enforcement present. We'll do everything we can to ensure the safety of the students, and they will be counted as an unexcused absence, just like any other student would on any other given day if they stood up and walked out of class for 17 to 30 minutes. So I think we've communicated with the staff. The teachers know that we have a safety plan, and I believe the teachers are going to stay in the classroom and continue to teach to the students that remain in the classroom. I think that's, that's what we think's going to happen, to the best of our knowledge, and we will do our best to deal with whatever unfolds tomorrow, starting around 10 o'clock, and above all, try to maintain safety in our schools. That's what I've got.
Okay, thank you, John. At this point, it's the time and the agenda for board comments. Do we have any?
Well, Julie and I met with John and Gail to test the board's calendar and flush that out, some more processes to make sure that events and filtering through to the board so that we can, and we did have a discussion regarding the letters that come to the board email and all that is, but we need to have a discussion as to when it, you know, usually it's the board president who communicates that with you about what that might, how that might unfold so that, make sure that people realize that we get, so they know that they're heard and that the board receives those emails, get to the appropriate person to get the answers that they're looking for.
I'm going to loop back to one thing that I didn't point out in the personnel actions that you approved.
Okay.
Because I thought you were done. I didn't, I didn't point out that Kristen White, as of tonight, has been named the principal of Cascade Middle School. I removed the interim from her title. She's done a great job this year, and I was just getting a little alert on my email that Janay sent out the notice to all staff and thought, you know, I really ought to recognize that. It's, she came in at the last minute when we had a very late retirement and was named basically July 1st and stepped in and has done a wonderful job. So I'm glad to be able to name her permanent principal at Cascade.
So vested interest in that. We've all kind of made comments to Julie's board ceremony the other night, winning the Iris Awards, and most of us were there. It was an amazing night, an amazing award on National Women's Day. So congratulations again. As John alluded to, the Evergreen School District Foundation's annual gala, the largest event of their, of the year for them is, so if you are planning on coming, come on out. We're going to have a lot of fun. I'm excited to almost have it over.
I saw you're in charge.
I am in charge of it this year, and I'm retiring afterwards, so.
So it's going to be good?
Of course.
It's always fun.
All right.
I think most of us will be there.
Yes, unlike last year where everybody was out of town.
Yeah, we're at a conference, so they scheduled the gala without us. That was very wrong.
We will be there this year.
With our Hollywood glamour.
I don't know about that, but, close to it. As glamorous as we get, right?
Hey, I, you know me.
Well, I know you will, yeah.
Give me a chance to break out the rhinestones. I will.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, thanks, Jenny. Any other board comments? Okay, next we have future agenda items that we have a need to bring up. I don't see any. Next, we have citizens' comments. So this is the portion of the meeting where citizens can come up to address the board for three minutes. It can't be on anything related to personnel or anything legal in nature, and because it won't, it's not on the agenda, the board will not be able to respond. But, so do we have anyone on the list?
The name on the list is Maddie Metzger from Evergreen High School.
So Maddie, would you like to come forward to the podium and address the board?
How about the front table here? Be able to see what you've got? I look like a trifold.
I am showing my project from Miss McGregor's World History Classroom. My project's about Vanport and what happened during the flood, like during, before, during, and after. Before the flood, Oregon was home to 2,565 African-American in 19, after the war, 6,000 people lived in Vanport. From 1942 to 1948, Vanport became the nation's largest wartime housing development. Vanport had shopping centers and a 750-seat movie theater. People also knew Vanport as Kaiserville. 1942, Vanport had received its official name. During Vanport's flood, after the war, about 18,500 people lived there. May 30th, officials let everyone know the dike was safe. At about 4:17 PM, the dike had broken, sending a 10-foot wall of water into the area of Vanport. Thousands of, thousands of people have fled, many of, many with nothing but clothes on their backs. The water had gotten waist-deep, so started to make human change. During the flood again, the flood was delayed for about 30 minutes, giving people time to escape. Vanport's flood damage was over $100 million. The time of the flood, Vanport had gone down to about 18,500 people. After the flood, records say about 15 people had died. Over 18,000 had been left homeless, some with nothing but clothes on their backs. People started to head up north when an emergency siren had sounded. After Vanport got flooded, thousands of people had been displaced. Low-income families, veterans, and minorities were among the former residents of Vanport without permanent homes. After the flood cleanup, Vanport turned into Jansen Beach, which had also a golf course, an amusement park, nine soccer fields, seven football fields, and the PDX International Raceway. The only physical reminder of Vanport was various signposts around the lake.
I guess we have to regret that because this is a citizen comment time, we're not really permitted to ask questions, but if you stay around for after the meeting, we'll talk to you.
Yeah, we'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Maddie.
Got it.
Does she need to put her address on this paper? Okay.
Okay, anyone else for citizens' comments? Want to come forward?
Rob Lutz, 2605 Northeast 91st Street, Vancouver, Washington. I just wanted to thank you guys for your resolution today on school safety and gun violence. As you know, we passed a similar resolution, a resolution earlier in the month. I have been, I understand the situation. You guys are into some things. I got the opportunity to be director of my membership to help organize some of these things that may be happening tomorrow. I know they're all doing it on their own, though, for the most part, and they haven't needed me for much of anything, other than, hey, I bought you some, some people some orange wristbands. That's about all I needed to do. You'll be very impressed with some of the things that may take place tomorrow with walkouts, with some very well-organized students, socks off in some, well, I'll see you later. I'm not needed here. So, and also thank you for your endorsement of the March for Your Lives on the 24th. Bill Bevel and I have been having the opportunity to work with a student-led group the last couple of weeks in the organizing of that as well, and it's, thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else for citizens' comments? Okay, so now it's time for recess, and just want to let you know, after recess, we'll be signing papers as a board, and then after the recess, the board will have a workshop over in the Green Complex, and we'll be talking about an update on asset preservation and the study and survey on facilities. We'll be talking about Operational Expectation 11, which is instructional program. We will have a WASD Open Meeting Training. We'll also have a board meeting debrief, a legislative update, and a superintendent update, and then we will have an executive session where we will be talking about real estate and personnel. So now- So now we are in recess. Thank you.[1784.87]